Call us mean to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please be seated. Remember to silence your cellphones if you have them. Two on the agenda is Citizen Concerns, if there's anyone who'd like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda. Hearing none. Item three is approval of the agenda.
I'll move it. Second?
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
If possible, I would like to pull number seven off the consent agenda and address it separately if I could.
Very well. It will follow the consent agenda. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Discussion on that. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items four through eight constitute a consent agenda, routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a Board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the December 5th meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six from Human Resources includes the memorandum of personnel transactions. This includes the hire of the zoning coordinator position. And item B is authorization to initiate the hiring process. Moving on to item eight, from Gene Logan, is the approval of the appointment of Ron Engel to the Community Action Agency Board of Directors. Appreciate that willingness to serve and any questions on that item? Then I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Second by Taylor. Discussion. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Following this is item seven, moved out of the consent agenda, Secondary Roads County Engineer Mark Nara. This is approval to set a public hearing for considering the Level C classification of Pocahontas Avenue on January 30th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. I understand there may be a date change requested.
I talked to Mark and we were gonna see if we could move it to January 9th. This has been going on now for what, three? Well, actually since Thanksgiving morning when I was contacted first. So we're gonna try to move it up to have our hearing on the 9th to make that a Class C road.
No objections. No objection from the engineer? No objection from the Board members? Want to make that motion?
I'd move seven, changing the date to January 9th at 5:00 PM.
I'll second the motion by Potabom. Discussion. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item nine includes A. This is a presentation of a resolution thanking and commending Rick Schneider for his years of service with Woodbury County, and they were quite a few years. So the Board signed a resolution I'd like to read at this point. This is thanking Rick Schneider for his service to Woodbury County. It reads, "Whereas Rick Schneider has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Woodbury County Conservation Department for 42 years, from March 1st, 1975 to December 15th, 2017. And whereas the service given by Rick Schneider as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County, now therefore be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of the Board thanks and commends Rick Schneider for his years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved that it is the wish of all those signing below that the future hold only the very best for this very deserving person, Rick Schneider." Custom is to hand this off and I'll come down and hand it off to you. Please give him a round of applause. Rick, would you like to say a few words?
I would.
Does he have to keep it to three minutes like everybody else?
Three minutes after almost 43 years.
Forty-three minutes.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board. Matter of fact, all the Boards that I've worked with through the years for all the support. It takes my staff, it takes my Board, it takes your support. Not supposed to get emotional. But, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Rick has been a central figure in Woodbury County, really grown to respect the work he does and the accountability he shows to a lot of different people and organizations, including the Board. Being involved in this for so long is clearly it's your passion, and I'm just glad that you were able to impart some of that passion and training to who will be the person who will be following in your footsteps. Wish you the best in wherever you decide to travel and retire and all that.
We travel.
Move on to another one. Item B is a presentation of resolution thanking and commending David Benson for his years of service to Woodbury County. The bulk of it reads the same, but I will center on the first paragraph. Reads, "Whereas David Benson has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office for 24 years, from February 22nd, 1993 to December 17th, 2017." I had the pleasure of giving some courthouse tours this year to inquisitive classes of young people, all the way down to five to six years old. David Benson was, he's always there when he has time to answer questions on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and provide that sort of welcoming presence to the kids and pass out gifts and really I admired the way you answered some kind of off-the-wall questions kids ask about the courthouse and about what cops do and are you gonna arrest them? And you really just brought a light to the atmosphere there and so appreciate all the years you've served and continue to wish you the best. Please come down and receive. Like to say a few words?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a great honor to be here with you guys and with the other people from the county here to receive this. I just want to say that through the years I've had a really good run. I've met some wonderful people, got to know a lot of citizens and a lot of fellow county employees. Nothing that I did could have been done or could have been done as well as it turned out for me if it wasn't for the Secondary Roads guys, the Parks guys. Everybody connected the county business, from the ladies in the office on down. Everybody has always supported everything we've done with our crime prevention stuff and our county stuff, and we did it as a team. And I'm leaving today and I'm very happy with how things have been. I think I've had a great time and I really appreciate the Board's support, my Sheriff's support, and all the command staff that I've worked under. They've always did nothing but stand behind me and help me with my stuff, and I thank you for allowing us to be a team. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10 from the County Sheriff. This is an action item. Approval of a request to make a joint purchase of Vertra Systems 180 LE1 Training Simulator with the Sioux City Police Department utilizing gaming revenue. This is something that was brought up during Citizen Concerns and we have a major here with us.
Major Todd Wick, Sheriff's Office. Just here to, brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago that this is something that we could purchase with gaming revenue. Dennis mentioned it to me directly after the meeting and I'm just gonna present it to you and answer any questions that you might have. I kind of spoke briefly about it a couple of weeks ago when I was here, kind of explained what it was and how we got involved and it's an excellent training tool, something that we would never, ever be able to afford on our own. And the Sioux City Police Department came to us about a month ago with the idea that they obviously, majority of this is being purchased with a MURD grant and then we are splitting the rest of it with Sioux City so that we can get the same training they can on this state-of-the-art piece of equipment.
There's a lot of backup materials here, it's very helpful. It mentions some ongoing expenses. What is the thought there?
I haven't been approached yet about any ongoing, and I think those are minimal though. That's something that can be handled.
Sizable grant?
Yes.
When is the 15,000 coming out of the budget?
Pardon me?
When is the 15,000 supposed to be out of the budget?
Gaming revenue.
Out of next year?
This year. I believe it's this year, isn't it? You're buying?
Yes, yes, yes. This is an invoice that we have to get over to them.
City's paying for it? Yeah, but one agency's buying it.
No, we're buying it jointly. They've got the grant, the entire cost of the equipment is 131,000 and some change and 100,000 of it's coming from a MURD grant that the city had and then we're splitting the rest of the cost with the city.
Was there nothing in the budget planning for something like this?
No, this just came to our attention about a month ago that we could do this.
It comes out unallocated, which we have funds available. So actually, when we budget, we budget all the money. That way we don't have to do a budget amendment every time we turn around. So yes, we do have it indirectly budgeted unallocated, it's gonna be allocated today if the Board desires.
Where's it gonna be located?
Down at the Police Training Center. They're going to set up a room specifically for it.
Down south of the airport?
Yes.
Okay. And there won't be any question on whether we get access to it or?
No.
That's been a question in the past.
No, we will have access to it. You know, there will be some scheduling that'll take place, but we plan on getting almost everybody with our office in front of that thing quite a few times.
Nice.
That was one of my questions. My other one was just, what's the balance right now? And it's not a worry question, it's just what's the balance?
I'm pretty sure it's roughly 180,000 unallocated.
Good.
And when I figured next year's budget, I did figure out there would be some expenditures coming up through June 30th. I think it put aside about 50,000 if it happens. We don't have a carryover, which I anticipated if we don't spend it, increase our carryover. So I did anticipate some things coming up the rest of fiscal year for the Board potentially to approve.
I would again like to thank you, Dennis, and the rest of the Board, everybody here for doing this for us, offering to purchase this out of gaming revenue.
We haven't voted yet, but I'll move it.
Second?
I'd like to see it once it's installed.
Okay. We'll get you on it.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Discussion. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
I'm gonna vote no.
Passes four to one, Raddick opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 11 from Emergency Services Director Gary Brown includes item A for action. This is a public hearing regarding the lease agreement for the Climbing Hill East Water Association. It is 4:45 PM, which is our set time for this public hearing. My understanding is the public hearing is now open for anyone to address the Board on this item.
Right now, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second?
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom to close the public hearing. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Now we move to item B.
This is a 20-year lease with a 10-year potential extension. This is the second well that will be installed on the county's property at Climbing Hill Field School. There's significant issues in parts of the community out there with underground storage tank contamination. It is not the case on our property, what these wells will, the one that's there now and the one that we're gonna put in, they serve multiple residences up and down the street in Climbing Hill, so they get clean, quality drinking water. There'll be an association, so they'll be responsible for all the costs. And as a part of the agreement, they'll also be required to mow inside, there'll be a compound fence. They're required to mow inside the compound fence and keep the weeds trimmed around the fence perimeter. So as far as our staff goes, we have no involvement whatsoever with the care and maintenance. It's completely up to them to do, we just host it on our site. The installation is being paid for by DNR and the Underground Storage Tank Fund, and it's anticipated hopefully in the next 30 years, rural water will begin to spread across Woodbury County. If it does, at some point in the future, if these wells are no longer needed, the Underground Storage Tank Fund or some fund that follows that will be responsible for plugging the wells and removing them and removing the compound fence and returning the land back to the way it was before because there's some concrete that'll have to be taken up and that kind of stuff. So it's no cost to the county, it's a dollar for 20 years with a 10-year extension. Be it a good neighbor. We've already got five homes on the first well and there'll be four homes and two businesses on this well. Well, I guess the barn is now a residence, it's no longer a business, so the any shop will also be on it. And then this will also cause the well at the bank to close, the one that they're currently using. Any questions?
None for me.
I would move the authorization.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom. Discussion or questions? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Next is item 12 for information, the Chairman's Report includes item A. This is the Town Hall Meeting the Board held yesterday in Lawton. I believe it went very well. No matter what sort of feedback we receive, it's good to be out there and it's good to hear, it'll be accessible. And continue to appreciate our Department Heads and elected officials for their attendance and being willing to be the face of Woodbury County in addition to the Board. Any thoughts from Supervisors?
Well, I thought it was very good and again appreciated the discussion on emergency management services and paramedics, and I think it's a good way to vet some of those things and not all the time can every council person come, so I thought it was a good way to start to do that.
Yeah, it was a good, it was a good thing to have an actual quorum of the host towns' council there, so they had to call themselves to order and that helps us to ensure we're communicating with the decision makers and the fact that, you know, three mayors attended last night and have attended our regional town hall meetings, I'd say about three average each time has been helpful to get, you know, the mayors are really the movers and the shakers in the rural communities. So we've had four of these and I'm sure there's ways to improve it, tweak it. We've kind of evolved over the years in how we hold these. Are there any thoughts from Board members on going forward, things they'd like to see changed or things they liked about the format or anything?
It was nice to hear the County Engineer got a chance to talk about roads and bridges.
Yeah.
Always seems to be a popular subject. You know?
Too close there.
All right, well, item B then is a reminder that we have a first budget review session for fiscal year 19 next week. We've held these in the past either one or two o'clock before the Board meeting, we've found that works out well. We're open to, I'm open to suggestions.
At least 2:00 PM, please.
At least 2:00 PM. Dennis, do we, would that be cutting it close? Do we, do you think that's a good?
We'd probably get through.
We, you think we could? Okay.
Yep.
And of course, if we don't, then they get pushed to the next week, but does 2:00 PM sound, work well for everybody?
I like two.
All right.
I like that better too.
Okay. And we'll plan for 2:00 PM to have our budget review. At this point, do we have any closed sessions?
At this point, we do not.
Okay, so we'll go toward, go to the 4:30 Board meeting if we need to. Item C is another reminder. The Board will have received a Department Head evaluation. I copied them in on by email. As you know, we, as a Board, decided to use a standardized format to evaluate the performance annually of Department Heads and it's easy to put it on the back burner with all we have going on, so I would just request if you could get those done by the end of the calendar year. I think that'd be good. It'll be in the personnel file, it'll be copied confidentially to the Board members. And how is that process going for other Board members? Do we have any feedback?
Yes. I sent the evaluation of goals, Rocky and I did for the June all detention, going through the other one. I think that this is excellent evaluation tool. As far as thoroughness and the length, I think maybe a couple of, it's six parts, maybe four would be more inadequate. So as we come to next year's, maybe there's some modifications that we can make. Again, very, very good tool. I just think it labors to the point at some point, but it's going well.
Yeah, I can, I can see that with, you know, two sections on goals. Can have a lot to fill in.
Right.
But, anyone else? Does that sound good to everybody? Good expectation to, so our Department Heads know what to expect, I think. That's what I have. Item 13 is reports on committee meetings. Any other ideas?
I've got a couple, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had a good meeting with three representatives from WCICC, the Lynn Blades and Jim John concerning the audiovisual historic courthouse tour. Lots of good ideas were bandied about and we are going to see if we can get some content developed within the next four to five weeks and really appreciate WCICC's help in that. So that should be good. The other one I wanted to report on, Siouxland District Health. Tomorrow we'll be doing a budget review and then they'll be making the recommendations on to the Board. I do think at some point in the budget process, we need to revisit and look at the health fund because right now they're programming on a 5% increase and I know that we'll get to this eventually, but I'd like to see if an increase is merited at all, given the very, very healthy fund balance and the fact that we've had increases that have cost employees and taxpayers in the past. So they'll be making that with a 5% increase, so then they'll, we'll have to look at that as well as the reserve levels that they have, which we need to work on.
It's good to hear the fund is healthy.
Right. And then the last one I have, Rolling Hills on December 20th. I am increasingly optimistic that we are going to have a good hearing and that they may look at what their budget would look like with Woodbury County. And we, of course, answered some questions that Sioux Rivers region has been able to definitively answer that have been helpful on the reserve balances going forward, the disposition of the Tribeview Building, and so on. So I'm hopeful, I'm excited, and I'm awaiting with anticipation.
On that note, how certain is it that the Sioux Rivers Board will create two possible budgets, one with and one without Woodbury County, given Woodbury County's statements that?
Yeah. I think at the last meeting it became clear that negotiations with providers beyond July 1st was a moot point and I don't know that it makes sense to include Woodbury County in a budget. I don't know what Shane Walter, the CEO, will recommend, but I've made it clear, at least from my vantage point and speaking individually, maybe Supervisor Raddick, you wanna chime in as well, but we are no longer a part of Sioux Rivers region whether Rolling Hills accepts Woodbury County or not. So that's one point. The other that I want to make is this. Right now, our budget, and Dennis, I want you to just correct me if I'm wrong, is roughly $4.3 million. Based on what Sioux Rivers is planning to levy next year, we can generate about $2.9 million through our levy. That's an over $1 million gap. So I would just want to make it clear that Sioux Rivers' reliance on reserves is coming to an end and they are going to need to cut more than $1 million, whether we're there, whether we're in Rolling Hills, that's coming. So I just want to make everybody aware and our public aware because those who like to misrepresent the issue sometimes will look at the hard decisions Rolling Hills will have to make. They're the same hard decisions that Sioux Rivers would have had to have made if Woodbury had remained.
Separately, Dennis, as the Sioux Rivers fiscal agent at this point, do you concur with those numbers?
Yes.
Good news.
You know, they're still moving the actual per capita around. Last year we had, they had two different per capita's, but the end, because their reserves are going down, the end of these one-time expenses are out. This is the last year they're gonna do them. So it could create some problems in the future because we've relied on the Crisis Center with somewhat of a, I want to say not a bailout, they don't have the revenue, it's gonna come to head July 1st. So there's gonna be price and changes.
Okay, so yes.
Yeah, and the reason I want to mention it now is that I want detractors to say that this is a result of a move when it's clear you are spending $4.3 million and next year you can only generate $2.9 million. There's an over $1 million gap. And if you rely on reserves, you can do that for a finite amount of time.
In fact, the gap may even be bigger because they've had a rate of 22.58, they've had a rate of 25, they've had one rate of 28, so it just keeps, it's a moving target almost. So they'd have to go at least a million at the upper end, it could be more.
Mr. Raddick, do you want to chime in? No? Spot them.
I have one question, and you mentioned it, that negotiating with vendors for Sioux Rivers would be a moot point because we're not gonna be there. For Rolling Hills to do a budget with us, will they be negotiating with the vendors here?
I would say if they choose to accept us, that they would negotiate with providers beyond July 1st.
But I mean, you said in December 20th, you were hoping they would do budgets with or without us, so they knew. And they do a budget without knowing what the vendors, without negotiating with vendors?
They would just have projections based off previous year.
Yeah, I think within some sort of scope of...
Okay. That was only a house word.
Plus a couple percent maybe, I think.
What is the percentage of the budget that's typically spent in Rolling Hills?
Oh...
Seventy percent of the budget average each year for the last couple of years?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at what they're budgeted to, actual expenditures.
Just wondering if they're...
We haven't seen that.
If they're, if they match up to their proposals more closely or less.
Yeah, if they budget $4 million, do they spend $4 million?
Exactly.
Do they spend three and a half or where are they at? Where with Sioux Rivers, and in the past, we've always budgeted more and spent less. So I think that's what you... So I think that's what you're getting through there with Rolling Hills. And that's a question we'd ask the CEO over there, too.
In one year was sixty-nine percent.
Yep.
It'd be a good question, as we, if they're gonna budget with Woodbury County. Any other reports on committee meetings? Will you be attending that meeting?
I will not be able to, but I believe that Dennis has been volunteering to maybe go, and I've asked if Supervisor Raddick, I'm not sure if.
I cannot get off of work, do you?
Anybody's welcome to go if they wanna go.
We can't volun-
Right, there's no.
We can't volunteer without our supervisors.
We can volun-ask.
We can volun-ask, that's right.
So if anybody would like to go, great group of supervisors, wonderful CEO, and I think you will find a.
What is that meeting?
It's December twentieth, at one PM.
Week tomorrow. Yep, twentieth to one PM, at the SAC County Law Enforcement Center.
Yep, yep, yeah. I can might, I might be able to do it. I'll have to see if the economic development corporations can do it for me for one.
Then we'll survive.
And this is a one-time thing?
It's, once you go, you'll never wanna come back.
No, it's been discussed.
Volun-ask.
Any citizen concerns?
Connie Barrett, fifteen twenty-one South Cleveland, I'm the advocate for the Woodbury County in addition to the Woodbury, some of them, some of them, so. I wanna continue to remind you how much we, who provide mental health services in this county, appreciate the plan and the services provided to our disabled citizens. That plan was developed after years of public meetings where everyone interested was invited. Those meetings were held this year also. Reading the minutes from the November meeting of the Rolling Hills region, however, I noticed Mr. Taylor does not realize that we have traditional beds and services. How much more does he not know about our plan? Without the community involved, as we have voiced in in the past, there is real concern. Reports are given at the end of the supervisor meeting with no mention in the agenda. How can people be here when it's never mentioned in the agenda? Again, with no one questioning why the transparency is so important, it was just such a short time ago, we was all talking about transparency. If Rolling Hills did not publish their minutes, our community would know nothing. Two phrases are in those minutes. One is a quote from Mr. Jeremy Taylor, "There is no objection to advancing their reserve of balance into the region, and they do not expect Rolling Hills to substitute Woodbury County, subsidize Woodbury County. Have you not already made promises with those reserve balances?" And the next quote is, Jeremy Taylor was not sure if he could go beyond initial offerings without speculation. Do you gentlemen know what he means by that quote? The general public probably doesn't. This is too important to our community and the population served by these funds, not to have everything very transparent, so that there is some planning and less suspense. This is not a simple matter to be taken lightly. We will be tied to this into the future. Please make sure you know what he's doing."
I'd like to put these into the minutes, because I wanna make sure that you're aware that I'm concerned.
Hat. A narrative of what was said. If it's already been spoken to the board, I don't.
I made a few changes.
Okay, well, the gist was received by the board, and that's the purpose of receiving additional information, so I think we've, we've received it. Are there any other citizen concerns before we get to board concerns? Board concerns, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much. Obviously, we've heard from the advocate many, many, many times, wanna make sure that everybody else in the public is aware of the truth, and that's this, we do not publish what reports are going to be given. We never have, and I don't think we will. We make sure that you know, which is the whole reason for transparency's sake, that we're doing the report in the first place. So when a supervisor lets you know as the public, and they report on a meeting that was attended, that's the whole purpose of the report, I think that's obvious to most people. Furthermore, regarding not being able to speculate on what else Woodbury County could offer, that would be because this board actually takes action, and I don't speak for the entire board on any other promises, despite the insinuations otherwise, which again, aren't true. So I just wanna make sure, because, because you hear some misinformation, I wanna make sure that you hear the truth. The other thing is that those minutes that were read, they are transparent, they are exactly what was said. In fact, saying that the reserve balances would be transferred and could be used is the same thing that's happening right now in Sioux Rivers region. So any insinuation otherwise is just, is a falsehood. So I'm glad that those minutes were read, in fact, you can get the Rolling Hills minutes like everybody else, and I hope that you do. Transparency has been lacking in that process with mental health funds, which is clear, and I think this board is taking positive action to do otherwise. So thank you very much.
Any other board concerns?
You know, on that note, you know, the last Rolling Hill, or excuse me, Sioux Rivers meeting, we, we both voted against the minutes just because of taking words out of context within the minutes, and it's just wrong. I guess on a different subject, you know, we, we heard from a guy in Danbury on the Moville Bridge, and we heard from somebody out in Lawton, and, you know, I can't vote to reconsider, because that was the no vote, but I, I'm not saying that we don't do it, but maybe move it out maybe two or three years. There, there's a concern of a, a bridge on a bus route rated at three tons, that one, in my opinion, takes the highest priority at, at this point, you know, if you got a bus, it's gotta go a route, but I just wanted to bring that up, that's up to you guys. I think it could be something to look at, maybe, instead of next year, in maybe two years, especially because the road in Moville hasn't developed all the way to that bridge anyway, they're not ready for it, and it's literally a one-minute extra drive, so, that's it.
At least it could be highlighted during the budget discussions, somewhat mentioned, and see if the board wants to take any additional.
Well, maybe even if the engineers got a report of higher priority options.
I, I guess, one of the things we could do is, there are bridges that are paid for just strictly out of the secondary road fund, we don't have federal aid funds, we're not using any of the one point three million dollar fund on those, those are the bridges that were involved in the discussion surrounding the Haskell Avenue scheduling. We have other bridges, too, that, where we're interfering with bus use, I'd, I'd have to do a query of our database to see exactly how many bridges we have that are posted less than ten ton, that can't safely carry a school bus. I would suspect it's probably in the neighborhood of somewhere between twelve and twenty-four bridges that, that have that very low posting. It's one of the things that, that we try to look at. One of the more useful things that maybe could be done is, I could share the map that we use that shows our bridges and how they're rated by sufficiency rating, which gives a relatively good idea of, of how they rank from the perspective of load postings. Typically, a low sufficiency rating below twenty-five indicates a bridge that is posted to most truck and, and even school bus loads. It might give you all some insight on how our, our bridge projects are selected, as we look at our three hundred bridge population, our seventy that are rated below fifty on sufficiency rating, and then how we choose those. The bridges that the lady was referring to, on Jewel Avenue, there's two bridges within that mile, one is posted either three or six tons right now, the other, if memory serves, has a three truck posting on it that's either eighteen or twenty tons on the straight truck, twenty-four or twenty-eight tons on a semi, and then twenty-eight tons or something like that on a double bottom trailer, both are in the five-year program. The, the one bridge is actually in for twenty eighteen construction. We're looking at replacement of that bridge with either a pre-cap structure, like the one we took quotes on a couple of weeks ago, where we'll put down a, a substructure with driven each pile, and, or, or a large concrete box, I'm not sure which yet, we haven't finished the hydraulics on it, but we do have the survey done. So that bridge she was concerned about is still in the program and still moving forward.
Okay.
The second bridge is in, I think fiscal year twenty twenty-one, that she had concerns about. But we have roads on either side of that that have no posted bridges, so that's one of the reasons that, that her Jewel Avenue bridges, which I, I understand was where her farm was, didn't take as high priority as some of the others, where you look and we have a cluster of those bridges that are, have very low load ratings on them. And if you've been looking at the maps that we've been turning in with our plan sheets, we've done five bridges in that Correctionville Cushing-Anthon kind of triangle down there, and, and we had some real hotspots where it wasn't just a, a three-mile detour to get around the mile, we were having five, six, seven-mile detours to get around the mile with crops or whatever else we're working with. So that's one of the things we look at, and perhaps bringing in that map to a, a meeting where the board has some time to look at it would be worthwhile, or if you just wanna stop my office sometime, I, it's the one I have right above my desk, because it is always been my number one concern, is getting that bridge system approved. But, you know, I can show you what the, what the options are, and, and then, you know, you can make an informed decision on how quickly you wanna proceed with that. At this point, we have started the survey work, and we're prepared to start the design work on it, so that it can be let sometime after July twenty, or July twenty eighteen, which is fiscal year twenty nineteen, which is where, at the board's prior direction, we have the Haskell Avenue Bridge.
Now, do you do that in-house, or do you contract that out?
The scheduling?
The survey work?
We do that all in-house.
And then would that be changed two years from now?
No.
It's not like you're undoing anything if you.
No.
Have to delay.
Anything we do is, is there handy. One of the bridges we're working on right now is U one, or U fifty-one, which is down by Hornick, that bridge was started by my predecessor. The design hydraulic and survey work is all as good today as it was when that work was done in two thousand and six, so that bridge was delayed in, in letting, and, and it's one we had to close because of substructure failure. It's now coming back to the forefront, and it's one we're trying to get pushed out of the office here yet this year, so, none of that work would be impacted. Getting that old bridge out, I think, was a very good thing, as we recommended, by getting all of that structure out of the stream, will do a lot less damage to the creek bank and adjacent properties if we have another flood come through in twenty eighteen.
And my desire to put a ramp to try to jump over it is now gone.
You'd, you'd need more power than a bicycle now, so.
But you could try it with your bike, Keith, and we'd watch. It felt ticked.
We, we'd watch, promise not to laugh.
Well, what time works for everybody? We need to send out a notice of gathering for that.
But if, if the chair wants to let me know, if you want me to bring that in the next couple of weeks, I can.
Any other board concerns? There is a notice of gathering to be sent out for Monday, twelve to two, for any supervisor who'd like to, there's a holiday gathering to introduce kind of a meet and greet on the sixth floor for planning and zoning, and board adjustment members. And could someone look at the humming or ringing that's in the audio around here? I've just been noticing it. No, it's not just you. Mark and I hear it higher frequencies or something. Hearing no other board concerns, we are adjourned. Thank you.